Thank you. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Fran Backstrand. I'm the chairperson of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is Tuesday, July 27, 2021, and it's past the hour of 6:00 p.m. This open meeting of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of June 16, 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberation of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to the Northborough Remotes Meeting on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. In this evening, I want to recognize the individuals who will be voting members during the hearing. When I call your name, if you would respond in the affirmative. Mark Ratan?
Aye.
Dick Rand?
Aye.
Jeff Leland?
Aye.
And Fran Backstrand?
Aye.
So, we will proceed with the four. Jeff, who was normally an alternate, has been raised through a voting member, and as two of our members are confirmed absent, and one is possibly delayed. So, moving forward, the first item on the agenda is to consider the petition of Bruce and Diana Wentworth for a variance for construction of an attached two-car garage on the property located at 27 Ridge Road, MAP 65, Parcel 77 and 78, in the Residential C Zoning District and the Groundwater Protection Overlay District, Area 2. And if our host will bring in the Wentworths, I believe they are in the audience. There you have it. Okay, if you would please, when you unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. My name is Bruce Wentworth, and I live at 27 Ridge Road in Northborough, Massachusetts.
Well, thank you, Bruce. If you would now just tell us what you're petitioning the zoning board for this evening.
Yes, thank you. We'd like to build an attached two-car garage, which is on the south side of our house. Our property is comprised actually of two pieces of property, and if the -- oh, yes, there we go. And as you can see, there is the main piece of property, and then this small wedge along the south side. If we could pull up the plot plan, if that's possible while I'm speaking. Oh, lovely, there we go. So, you can see there the proposed addition to the house, which is 22-foot-wide garage. I confess at the -- as you're looking at it here on the screen, the upper right-hand corner of the proposed garage, we are at 14.9 feet. So, I beg the appeals board indulgence on that inch and a half or so at that point. But since this is a wedge, we quickly move into compliance down the length of the garage until we get to the bigger question, which is the fact that the base of that triangle comes back in, and at the southeast corner of the garage, on the left-hand side, we're eight feet from that point. And that's where we also ask for relief to the left-hand side, if you can move the cursor. Yep, there we are. That's eight feet. And so, we're seven feet off because of the return and the peculiarity of that particular aspect to our property. I've personally taken the time to go out and measure this out myself. That corner of the property, not of the garage, but of the property, is actually embedded in a hedgerow of forsythia, and that's not going to go anywhere. That's going to stay right where it is. So, we consulted with our neighbors, Samantha McDermott, Jody Wilson, and on the opposite side, Bob, as to their sentiments over the addition, and they were all in agreement that this seemed to have no impact on them, and they provided letters stating their concurrence with the project. So, that's basically what we need relief from, is that peculiar angle to that, I consider it an odd piece of property. And if the board so votes, then we'll be able to proceed, I think, with the garage, with your permission.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Wentworth. So, if you could, for the board, your current driveway is on the opposite side of the home.
It is indeed.
Can you tell us why you're choosing this area, therefore requiring a variance versus the other area?
Right. Well, the other side, we -- there's no -- you're instantly out of compliance. There's no hope of being in compliance. So, we will have to make a turn in that driveway and bring it over to the garage. But that's the reason why we're on the south side of the house, is that it's just impossible to do it otherwise. You know, the previous owners created the addition, which is on the house there. That is the dining room, and then behind it, the family room, which is a wonderful addition. But that's -- dining room is probably where you would like to have put the garage, and they picked a dining room. And I think I'm glad that they picked a dining room. But for us, the only way around this is to put it on the south side.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Members of the board, questions? And you'll have to say, because I don't see people now. Okay, hearing none from -- oh, okay, hearing none at the moment. Staff, any questions or concerns?
No, none from me.
Okay.
Bob, you're on mute.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, all right, Mark, just one moment. Okay. All right, so, Bob, if you would mind holding off, and Mark, go ahead.
Okay. With this strange wedge on the side, we -- Bob, do we have any problem granting the setback from this double lot, I guess, instead of a single? Is there an issue with that property? Why?
No, that little wedge is owned by the applicant. And if it's -- if you remember right, way back when in 1981, if you had a piece of property that is non-conforming or non-buildable, the property line was kind of blurred in, and that piece of land was kind of merged in with the main lot. So, you know, I've got no problem with that. In terms of the applicant's comments regarding 14.9 feet versus eight feet, I would probably recommend that you grant relief of -- if he's going to be eight feet, I would say, you know, no closer than seven feet to the line. Give him a little bit of real estate, in case the pouring on the concrete is just a tad out. So, I would say probably grant relief no closer than seven feet.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, seven feet is what we need. Eight feet is the distance we currently have.
Right. And the other thing is, you've got 15 feet on paper on the other side of the building, so that if you did have to get a machine back in the backyard, it theoretically can be done.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mark. Jeff or Dick, do you have questions? Dick?
I just got a question for the applicant. Where's the septic system located on the property?
Yeah, so if you look where it says deck, so it's behind the deck in that blank space there, that's where the septic system is. The septic tank is actually located underneath the addition that kind of -- that the deck sort of wraps around there. But then the leach fields are in this -- on this image, the blank space, at least based on the documents that I've seen. We've never had any problems with the leach field so far, anyway.
Kate?
So, we should be -- have plenty of distance from it.
Did you look into moving the garage forward towards the street, so you wouldn't have this seven-foot difficulty?
That's actually an excellent suggestion, and the problem is that it gets worse at the front, right? So, that 14.9 gets smaller because of that wedge. So, you know, we're darned if we do, and we're darned if we don't.
Okay. Well, I just have a question. Why isn't that wedge shown on his property?
Well, both of them are our property. We get two tax bills.
Okay.
A big one, and then literally a tiny one.
So, just for people's clarification, these -- and I don't know if people -- let me just see if I can -- these little, what look like Z's, means that this lot -- that this has been combined with this.
Okay.
So, this is, you know, technically all one lot. And if I -- I'm going to guess that after this garage is built, I'm going to guess that the assessors will probably combine all of this as officially, you know, just one lot, as opposed to, you know, the applicant receiving two tax bills.
All right, so, a follow-up question, then, just unless we pull up the actual drawings. I know we always have to be concerned about the roof overhang with the setback. Is seven feet going to take into consideration any side? Is there any side or rear roof line that we have to be concerned with?
The upper portion of the garage will be in the same footprint configuration as the entire house. And so, what you're seeing here is a dormer on the front. There's not any particular overhang, other than a gutter, you know, what's needed for a gutter, on the front, and likewise on the rear. The side of the house, you'll still be able to walk with ease around the side of the house and get any of the -- of equipment that one might need, should one need it, like a lawnmower.
Okay. And then, just, Bob, for clarifications, just one more time, the 14.9, should we actually have in our decision that .1 relief, so that there is no question?
Excuse me, I would recommend probably do the worst-case scenario. He's looking at eight feet to that side corner, and he's got 14.9 at the front point of the garage. So, if you were to grant relief, so that the garage is no closer than, say, seven feet to the property line, that would take care of both the --
Oh, both ends, okay, perfect.
Both ends of the garage, right.
Okay, thank you.
Fran, I did have a question.
Good. Jeff, I can't see you, but go ahead.
Okay. So, just a question for the applicant, and that is, you approached your neighbors about how they felt. Did you talk with the neighbor of possibly buying a few extra feet on -- at the end of that wedge? Is that a viable option?
We did not do that. The neighbor in question is a new owner of her piece of property, but we did not raise the subject of buying more property from her. That's Samantha McDermott. And I guess it could solve -- one -- it would be a very weird little piece of property that we would be buying.
For the board, if you would like me to check, I'll stop sharing, and you can go on with your meeting, but I'll just separately go into our GIS map to see if that property owner even has spare footage, you know, frontage to, you know, for that to even be considered.
I mean, if you'd like, I don't -- Jeff, did you have a follow-up?
Well, the only follow-up would be, I think it was on Mark's question, and that is, or Dick's, I don't remember. If the garage were to slide forward somewhat, it wouldn't be the need for a full eight feet, even though it would be more in the front. But it would require a change to the design of the garage. I don't know if that would work with the applicant's plan. It seems like there may be a door in the back, possibly.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it certainly -- I personally, I think it would introduce complications. We are intending on having access to the garage from the basement of our house, so that at winter time, you know, you don't have to battle all the elements all the time to get into the garage. Our house is a split level, so we only have a basement that's essentially half in the ground, if you will. And that means that it's not so difficult to get a rear egress that takes you into the garage. We've aligned the garage, you know, consistent with the other roof lines of the house. If we brought it forward, that all would change quite a bit. And I'm just a little bit worried this -- I was sort of possessed by having this thing look really good from the street. That's -- I mean, I know you're not supposed to consider the looks of it for this particular meeting, but I was really concerned that this thing looked like it was meant to be, if you will.
For the board's reference, I just -- and for Mr. Wentworth, I just looked at the parcel, and the -- all the property there is in Area 2 of the groundwater, so it would require, you know, going forward, anything, any lot size of $40,000 or over. So, there really isn't any wiggle room to -- if the person even would sell their property. But given that it's in the RC district, but the fact that there's the overlay district, which requires twice the size, that restricts the lots.
So, just two final points on that. First is, thank you, Kathy, and also, I appreciate the applicant's honest response to that. So, but that answers my question, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other board members, questions? Staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone in the audience wishes to ask any questions or make any comments, you're welcome to do so. I would just ask you to raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Okay, seeing none. Do I hear a motion to close?
A move to close.
All right, that motion to close made by Jeff Leland, seconded by a muted Mark Ratan. Okay. And on a roll call vote, Jeff?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And Fran, aye. Okay, Mr. Wentworth, we will have two more hearings, and then we will discuss it at the end of the meeting. You're welcome to stay in the audience, or give a call back in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help.
Have a good night. Okay. Thank you, Jim. Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is to consider the petition of Scott Hogs for a variance for construction of a 16-by-24 deck on a property located at 14 Patriot Drive, MAP 63, Parcel 29, in the ground -- I'm sorry, in the general residential zoning district. And for the record, Jeff Leland will be a voting member on this variance as well. I see the applicants are in. If you could state your name, unmute, and then state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Scott Hogs, the owner of 14 Patriot Drive, and I'm joined by my wife Christina here this evening. We are seeking a variance to the minimum rear setback of 25 feet in order to construct a 16-by-24-foot rectangular deck that's going to be attached to the rear of the home. Due to the odd lot shape and the odd lot shape and the positioning of the home on the lot, a small portion of the proposed deck is going to encroach upon that minimum setback.
And how far into the setback are you going? Are you proposing?
Approximately six feet.
Okay. And I think Kathy is working at getting us some pictures.
Yeah, we do have a plot plan with the proposed deck that really kind of shows the right picture here.
Okay, there you go. Okay. Wrong one, Kathy. Move over one. Move over two. There you go. Thank you.
Sorry about that. So, this is -- so, you know, here's Patriot Drive. This is the property in question, and this is the odd-shaped lot that's causing the issue. And then, a little bit closer, here's the plot plan for the property. And again, this is the -- this is the corner of the new deck, correct?
Yeah, and then to the upper right is the corner that is going to be within --
Oh, it's that, right, yeah.
Yeah, so you can see the surveyor kind of plotted where the minimum setback is by that dash line, and so, just a small portion of the proposed deck will fall in there.
I'm sorry. So, this -- I was thinking -- I was thinking the corner was down here, but yeah, so it's this corner of the deck. It's only this portion of the deck that --
Right.
I mean, technically, the whole deck needs relief, but it's just this portion that, you know, sort of crosses over into the setback.
Right.
Thank you. And is there a current deck there?
There was. We actually removed it in the fall, because it was unsafe and rotting, with our children kind of running around, and the fact that this deck is actually above a walkout basement, so it's elevated, we wanted to get rid of it.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions from the board? Okay, while they're -- oh, Jeff?
Yep. It looks from this plan that the old deck also encroached. Was that done at the building time, maybe before the applicant owned the property?
Yeah, I believe it was the original deck. You know, we are the original owners, but the deck was very old and run it out.
So, the new deck is actually extended from what the original was. It may have encroached, but we're -- we don't know. But this new deck is larger than the old deck.
So --
For the north side of the house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, a question may -- I don't know if Kathy or Fred knows, was -- would that have been something that was done originally prior to these applicants? Or could it have just been a mistake initially?
It may have been previously. I didn't go into the history of the house that deeply. I don't know if it was a mistake and not caught, or if it was done with some sort of a variance. Regardless, what they're proposing to do is actually go into the setback further than what the original deck was built for. So, even if the old deck remained, you know, by extending further into the setback, a variance would still need to be required.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you. Mark? Unmute.
The property behind is the Asbit Park there?
Yes.
That's correct.
And heavily wooded, is it also heavily sloped?
Yes. And we have -- I don't -- it doesn't look like it's part of the attachment. We sent some photos of what you see from the back of our house at the lot line, the rear lot line, and what you can't see from the plot plan is the slope. There are multiple slopes, the whole -- from the -- like, we have a walkout basement, so from the front yard to the backyard is a full floor difference in elevation. And then, from the north side of the house to the south side of the house, following along that rear lot line, also slopes down. So, we're sloping this way, and then we're sloping this way. So, the reason we want to extend the deck in the direction that we are is because it's kind of unusable space for us and for our kids. And if we were to extend in the other direction, we'd be taking up where they play.
And I do believe there were pictures in the file.
Right, that looks like the ones I -- yeah.
Thank you. All right, Dick, you had a question or comment?
I was just curious, again, about whether they could move the deck towards the south and not have this confrontation with the lot line. Again, they just mentioned that the kids' play area is right there. Is that to the south of the deck?
Yes.
Right, and then there's also the chimney there, which kind of impedes on just keeping with, you know, a standard rectangular deck.
And then, also, in the packet that was submitted, there's a rear elevation of the house. So, we also want to -- like, where the deck ends, we kind of want to follow along where the windows are versus, like, stopping in the middle of a window or a door, which we're -- which we have above on the first floor and the basement floor. So...
So, if you were to move it over towards the chimney, it would no longer cover the downstairs exit?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Nice, thank you. Okay, Kathy or Bob?
I'm all set. But just to, you know, the -- I didn't print -- I mean, I didn't attach the pictures to what I have. I can bring those up if other people want to see those. But as Mark had asked and the applicant explained, this is all heavily wooded, and this is all Asbit Park, and then, you know, the water tank, I think the water tank is eventually over here, but this is all heavily wooded, as it is in the other, you know, as you sort of head south on this prop, you know, along this whole subdivision.
Right, kind of at 180 degrees, there's at least 200 feet of dense woods, where you can't see anything.
Okay, so, this is a public hearing. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak or have any questions or concerns, please raise your hand. We wait to be identified. Okay, seeing none. Do I hear a motion?
A move to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, there was a motion made by Jeff Leland, seconded by Dick Rand, and a roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Dick?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Fran, aye. Thank you very much. We will be deliberating at the end of the meeting. You can either stick around or give Kathy a call in the morning.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving right along. We are now to consider the petition of 22 Coburn Street Realty Street Trust for special permit for a demolition of an existing single-family home and construction of a new single-family home on the -- on a new position on the property located at 22 Coburn Street, MAP 29, Parcel 52, in the Residential C Zoning District and Groundwater Protection Overlay District, Area 2.
Fran, as Jim's bringing those people over, I did hear from Brad, and he's -- was stuck in traffic. He thought that he would be home in just a few minutes to join, but...
Well, Jeff is doing a stand-up job standing in.
Right. But that just -- But that just so, so, so we know that Brad was trying, so he may still be joining us, but.
Okay, all right, make sure, make sure that's in the, in the minutes, Brad tried. Okay, so I see three individuals in for this, so I'm going to start with Mr. Reynolds, if you could state your name, address and relationship to the project.
Yep, I'm Bob Reynolds, I'm the trustee for twenty-two Coburn Street. And I'm looking for your permission on to demolish the building. It's really a dilapidated dwelling, and then I'd like to, you know, just to try to rebuild and locate a new dwelling that would, you know, accept new setbacks and, and current building codes.
Okay, thank you, can you tell us who's with you? We have Kevin Esparo.
Kevin, I believe is in this meeting, yeah.
There, okay, and Kevin, you are? Oh, I'm just trying to guess who the players are, thank you.
I'm, I'm just advising, I'm a contractor, Shoesbury Homes Incorporated, but Bob is my, my father-in-law.
Okay.
And just advising.
Thank you. And Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes, Dave Bergstrom, Bergstrom Construction, and I am the builder, I'm also a Northborough resident.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Okay, so Mr. Reynolds, you indicated what you're trying to do, we're just gonna, Kathy's going to bring up, oh, there's Brad. Kathy's gonna bring up the property, if you could just walk us through a little bit about what we're looking at and what you're proposing.
Sure. Well, twenty-two Coburn, you know, is, has like eighteen feet of frontage right on Coburn Street, yep. And, and basically, what we're trying to do is take that dwelling that you see in the back part of the lot and push it towards the street so that we can give more of a backyard than a front, you know. Yep, like, so that's a special permit, I'm trying to just build a new home and, and take the old one down.
Okay, all right. Next, Mr. Bergstrom, did you have anything that you wanted to add about the location?
No, that's.
Building itself, or?
That's, you know, that's pretty much it, we'd like to, you know, get the lot more, the house more central so that we're, you know, utilizing setbacks as close as we can to, you know, the lot lines and get things more as far as the legal setbacks, plus we're trying to get it farther away from the pond. And given the condition of the existing house, which you can probably see in your, in some of the pictures that were in the packet, I mean, it's pretty much falling down. So it's kind of a multi-purposed move here to, to get the new house and the new location.
Okay, thank you. And for those who are listening, just so that you understand, the reason for the need for a special permit is because they are, they are demolishing a house and not replacing it on the current footprint, and therefore it does need a special permit from the zoning board for the structure to be located other than on the original footprint. So this is our opportunity to make sure it's going to meet today's standards versus whenever the original house was built. So I will, it, board members. Well, I do want to just acknowledge that Brad Blanchett has joined the meeting, Brad, you're certainly welcome to, you know, ask questions or concerns, we did elevate Jeff to the voting member because he was here from the beginning. Okay?
No problem, thank you.
No worries. So questions or concerns? Mark?
Okay, what's the state of septic system on the property and what are your plans for
David, 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 do you want to take that?
The, the septic system that's there was installed in two thousand and sixteen by the, by Andy Curtis, so that's been brought up to today's standards and the, it was very, was used very little due to the condition of the house. I believe Bob evicted the, the owner-tenant, I'm not really sure who it was, years ago, so the system was very, was seldom used, so we, we have basically a new system that we're going to connect the new, the new house to the existing new system.
Okay, and what are you going to do with the footprint of the existing system? Are you going to bury it, knock it down, dig it up?
I think basically all above, it's going to come completely off the, off the site, we'll take all debris, foundation, everything out of there.
Okay.
Yep.
Other members of the board?
Is there, are there any other rights of way or anything else as far as dragging any utilities, are you dragging an upgraded electrical system in?
Yeah, the electrical will be new. Yeah, basically we'll be starting brand new for, for water connection and, and electrical, and then needless to say with the septic being in the condition that it is, we will be, it'll be all new utilities.
Do you come in off your eighteen-foot?
We, yes, if you can see where the driveway, the new driveway, we will be trying to utilize as close to our little bit of frontage that we have, it's, it's a very unique situation, all of these pond properties, common driveway, and it's really kind of a unique, you know, situation around this. So we're going to try and with the new driveways to bring it out as close to our piece, frontage at Coburn Street.
Okay.
But it's a very, it's a very unique properties in and around the pond.
And since we are, we are referencing the pond, can Kathy, can you bring the other picture up and just show, I mean, what, oh, there's the pond, okay, there you go, okay.
But with the new move, we'll be back, and I think Mia has informed us that we'll be over a hundred feet back on the new location versus, versus the current location.
Okay, okay, here comes that window, oh, one second.
Yeah.
Storm is coming through now. Sorry about that. Okay, thank you, all right, other members of the board? Staff?
Just a little history on the existing house. I was brought out there with, I believe, the health agent four or five years ago or more, I, I honestly don't remember, but the house was in such deplorable condition that we had to basically revoke occupancy because of the condition of the house. As it stands now, it's junk, it's, my opinion, it's beyond any kind of a economically feasible repair. There's just so many things wrong with it. This house, if you take a good hard look at it, it was one of those cottages that went up and over the years and just had, you know, one addition after another after another, and none of it really was done well. So, you know, for that reason, way back when, we, we, we had, we removed the occupants. And from what I understand, that house has been vacant since then. In terms of not having a whole lot of frontage on the street, again, this is probably one of those lots that was carved up, you know, way back when, and, you know, the, the lot lines itself, you probably consider as pre-existing non-conforming. So it's, you know, using judgment about where the driveway empties into the street, you know, that, that's kind of up for debate.
So it does not need any, all right, I'm not going to worry about the frontage then. In the packet, there is a, a drawing that refers to silt fencing, I assume that's to protect when there's demolition and building, is that something that should be referenced in any decision?
I would probably defer to the conservation department for that. The current house, as it sits in the demolition zone, if you will, is within a hundred-foot buffer, so I would imagine that Mia would want that silt fence and all that business to protect the lake from the demolition. If there, once the old building is razed down and they start construction on the new building, I would recommend, and I think Mia would recommend also, that the silt fence stays for the entirety of the new construction, you know, just so that if you have any runoff, because, you know, when you take out the old building, you're going to have some scars in the soil and it's not going to be stabilized just yet, so it would probably make sense to keep the silt fence in place until the new house is up and there's some sort of vegetation to stabilize the soil.
Thank you, Bob. All right, I do want to note that in the packet, there are others supporting this change by the Butters along Coburn Street. Board, questions, concerns? Okay, all right.
Fran, I just wanted to let you know, we did lose Brad and we may have lost somebody else, I did hear two chimes of people leaving, so I don't know if that was a disconnection issue due to the weather.
I would only imagine so because it is pretty scary right here. All right, well, I will ask any of the audience members that are still in attendance, if you have any questions or concerns, to raise your hand and identify yourself and wait to be recognized. All right, seeing none. All the members are still here, so. Do I hear a motion?
To close the hearing.
It's a motion by Jeff Leland.
Fran, how about the public?
I did the public, I didn't, I asked, I didn't see anyone raise their hand. Just in case I missed it, if anyone in the public audience wanted to comment or have concerns, please raise your hand. There's Brad again.
I lost, because of the storm that's coming through, I just lost internet, so I'm back on.
Well, thank you so much. Okay, so seeing no audience questions, public questions or concerns, I heard a motion to close the hearing by Jeff Leland.
A second.
Okay, and a second by Dick Rand in a roll call. Jeff?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Mark? Oh, he's in the same, is he on the same side of town as you, Brad?
Yes, yep, it's, it's a monsoon.
Yeah, yeah.
Just like that, it's awful out, yeah.
All right, so now what do we do? I guess we're going to hold this open, oh, my light just flickered.
Yeah.
Ours did too.
Yeah, I mean, oh, look at your cats, Dave, watching the weather. I, I think, you know, it's a little odd, it's an odd situation, but where Mark was present through most of the hearing, Brad, were you, I don't know how long you were out of this hearing.
I heard most of this, this hearing, a good chunk of it, and I have no objections, I have no questions, but it's very straightforward.
So you, you can do that, Fran, because you still have, you still have four members present.
All right, so due to the loss of connectivity by Mark Ratan, I will move Brad Blanchett into a voting member for this special permit hearing, and I heard a, we had a motion and a second to close the hearing, so Jeff?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
And Fran, aye, thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds, we will be deliberating later this evening, oh, hopefully.
Yeah, everything just flickered.
There goes the power. What was that?
I don't know, as long as it's not another hundred and fifty-foot tree falling on my house, that's all I care about, sorry everyone, it's about me. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, so. We want to go, well. The two variances, though, we're going to have to wait for Mark because Brad was not in attendance and we need to have four votes.
Yep, that's true.
So why don't we start from backward forward and start with a special permit and hope Mark gets back on before the evening is over? Okay, so the applicant, the petition in front of us is to build a home on a different footprint, further away from a body of water and closer to the street, similar size, similar, you know, oh, here he comes. Okay, so how do people feel about the Coburn Street property and the special permit? Dick?
It seems like a reasonable thing to do, they're getting rid of a dull, dumpy house that needs to be demolished and they're putting up a reasonably new house, so it seems like a good win-win for this house.
All right, given it's a special permit, is there any conditions that you think would be applicable?
Just go along the building inspector and his recommendation about the silt fence.
And conservation.
Yeah, to any entire building process.
Okay, Jeff?
I'd agree with Dick, if this is an improvement to the property, to the neighborhood and any opportunity we can to facilitate improvement of some of these older community areas, as long as it's consistent with the zoning to the extent possible, I'm in favor of.
Okay, all right, and Brad and Mark?
I, I regret that I've missed the discussion up till now and just rejoined ten seconds ago, but it looks like an improvement to the property, so despite the fact that there are possible zoning, you know, it's not perfectly up to zoning, I think it's a vast improvement on the current state of the property and we should be encouraging this. I'm happy to see that he has a current septic system so that he won't be any issue with polluting the pond.
Hey. Brad, you concur?
I do, I concur.
Okay.
No objections whatsoever, I think this is a great idea, improvement of the property, so, yeah, no objections.
All right, so this is a special permit for for a home on the twenty-two Coburn Street, so somebody want to try a motion? And Mark, I will tell you, Brad got elevated to voting also in case you didn't come back in, but all five of us can be voting at this time. Jeff, you want to try making a motion?
Sure, I'll try, so I, I'd make a motion to grant petition of twenty-two Coburn Street Realty Street Trust for a special permit for the demolition of an existing single-family home and construction of a new single-family home on a new position on the property located at twenty-two Coburn Street, map twenty-nine parcel fifty-two, residential C zoning district, groundwater protection overlay district area two.
With what conditions?
The condition of having the silt fence as was recommended by the, who was it, Mia?
Mia, you have a conservation agent?
And any conditions of our building inspector.
And that was a motion and a second by Dick Rand. Roll call vote, Jeff?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Fran, aye, okay, thank you all very much. See if we can't get this done before.
Yeah, fast.
All right, so now we're, we're back to the Wentworths, and Mark, you were the voting, you were there, and this is a variance, so it does require, since there are only four voting members, a unanimous vote? All right, so how do people feel about the Wentworth property at twenty-seven Ridge Road?
Despite the fact they are crowding the lot line, I think it's reasonable because that is rear, back behind it, I, I, some bonus points for actually have a wedge of property that makes it fourteen feet to, well, closer to fifteen feet to the side, and it's that back corner that impacts things. Again, I tend to think that it. Again, I, I tend to think that it'd be, it'd be a good thing for them to have garage in the open area on the other side of the house.
Thank you. All right. Dick or Jeff, do you have any questions, concerns, discussion?
I'm, I support the petition. I think that the applicant answered the questions that we proposed, and it seems like the best spot to, to have the garage, and it fits.
Okay, thank you. Dick?
Yeah, we just agree with everyone else. It seems like a good spot for the garage. I mean, he's encroaching on the setback, but it seems like the only place suitable for it. So I'd agree with this.
All right, thank you. All right, so then do I have a motion?
I motion, if I may.
Yes.
I motion that we grant a variance for the property at 27 Ridge Road to allow a impact of eight feet onto the 15-foot set, side setback to allow the construction of the garage.
Second.
Okay, and allowing eight feet into the 15 gives him the seven feet he's asking for. Okay, just making sure. Okay, thank you. All right, that was a motion made by Mark, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And Fran, aye. Thank you very much. Oh, okay. And the last one is the Patriot Drive. Location, also a variance for a deck that encroaches into the rear setback of a parcel. Concerns, questions, comments? Mark?
If I may, I believe this is enough, I guess I'm, I'm running on a streak here. I think it's, once again, a reasonable thing. First of all, that they're backing on to town property, which is heavily wooded. So as far as the encroachment into the setback, I think it has minimal impact on just about everybody and their brother. I do understand that they don't want the deck dragged in the other direction toward the fireplace. I mean, toward the, yeah, toward the fire, the chimney. And also that it probably works better with the house to have it go in the direction they're going. You know, we could have a, a possible objection to the fact that they shouldn't have a 24-foot deck. But I, as I said, I think this is reasonable. It's also tucked behind the house, so there's no visual impact on the neighbors. And I think it just would allow them to enjoy their house, have a greater enjoyment of their property.
Well, thank you, Mark. And do we have a specific as to how many feet into the setback?
Yeah, they, they said that they'll need 19 feet off of the 25, which would be six feet into it. I would give them seven feet into the 25-foot rear setback of the property is how I read it.
Okay, I, I agree.
What you see, Bob?
And that was an affirmative from the building inspector, Bob Pedricoff. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Concerns, questions? Okay, Dick?
I'd just like to say I agree with what Mark had to say. It seems like a reasonable request. And, you know, it seems like a reasonable position to have the deck situated in that position on the house because of the windows and so forth, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, all right. So do somebody, does somebody want to craft a motion? Mark?
If I may, I move that we grant a variance for the property at 14 Patriot Drive to allow a seven-foot incursion into the 25-foot rear setback to allow the construction of a rear deck on the, on the house.
Second.
Okay, that was a motion made by Mark and seconded by Jeff in a roll call. Mark?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And Fran, aye. Okay, thank you all very much. Okay, that concludes our audience participation portion of the evening. Under all the new business, we have the review and approval of them June 22, 2021 minutes. If everyone received them, reviewed them, sent back comments. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
That would be Jeff.
I'll serve.
Okay, there you go. All right, we're gonna give that one to Dick and say, the motion was made by Jeff and seconded by Dick. Though I'm not sure, Jeff, you, I guess you, yes, you were a voting member tonight. Okay, so roll call vote, Jeff?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Fran, aye. All right, Kathy, any other business that you have for us?
Yeah, I just have a, a question for all of you as far as your next meeting. There is one application that came in. It's a sign application for Wegmans. They want to change some lettering on the storefront sign. And that's your only application that came in for August. You typically, what, you know, we set the the, the deadline a month ahead of the meeting that we would schedule the meeting for, the hearing for. But I just wanted to give you the option if, and I don't know what people's vacation schedules are at the end of the month, but if you did not want to meet in August, this could wait until, the, the hearing, it could wait until September, till your September meeting. So I just wanted to give you the option of that. You know, there's, there's plenty of time. Again, historically, you know, the board takes care of it the month after it's filed. But given that there's only one application and nothing was continued from this evening, just wanted to let you know that you could either still meet on August and we'll advertise it accordingly, or if you want to just move it into the September meeting.
Since I don't think it's impacting any construction and/or urgent need, I would be in favor of not having an August meeting and having it in September, knowing that we could then have, you know, five in September. But still, I mean, but how do other members feel?
I would agree with that.
Okay, thanks. Brad, yes, okay. Jeff?
That's fine with me as well.
Okay, and Mark?
And I'm ambivalent. I can go either way.
Okay. And the other thing I just want you to consider, though it doesn't have to be decided at this moment, if we chose, the, the Zoom option is an option. It is not a mandate any longer. And if we decided we wanted to hold our meetings in person at Town Hall, we can do that. It would just have to be advertised in that way. Given that there is a Delta variant out there that who knows what September is going to bring us, I'm not gonna necessarily recommend that for the September meeting. But we can certainly look at that if people, if we decided as a board by majority that we would prefer having them in person than over this system. So just keep that in mind. We can have the conversation in September. And unless someone has anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that was motion by Jeff Leland and seconded by Dick Rand in a roll call. Jeff?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Fran, aye. Thank you all very much and have a fabulous evening.